Okay, I call the meeting of the Brattleboro Planning Commission to order for Monday, February 6th, 2017. Let's see, first order is to approve the minutes from January 9th. No, February 6th.
Do you want to share?
I have one to share.
I'm not connected to the server anymore. Oh, there goes Kate.
Are you, are you, sorry, am I hugging it?
No, this is mine.
I'm trying to put it like...
We're hiding from you.
That's right.
Sitting on the arms chair.
There.
Sorry I'm late.
You're like 30 seconds late. Nothing.
Seconded, every second.
So who moved? And who seconded?
I'll move.
You move.
Oh, good. Thank you.
All right, any discussion?
Who seconded?
I did.
All right, hearing none. All in favor say of passing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
That's awesome. Okay.
Any announcements?
Not, oh, sorry, no. Thank you.
Any public comments? Seeing none. Now we'll have our downtown master plan work session.
Excellent.
Take it away, Rod.
All right, hello everybody. So tonight, what we thought we'd do is look at people's perceptions of downtown. There's some new members of the planning commission, and so we thought we'd take advantage of that situation. People that are relatively new to town too, I guess. And use you as a little focus group to actually contemplate some of the questions around downtown. And then some of us older folks will try and see downtown's fruit.
Older folk eyes.
We'll see very close up. So the idea here is that, for those of you who went around, when we did the town plan back in 2013, we talked about the need to do a downtown master plan. And then we also talked about the need to do new land use regulations. When we did the land use regulations, we looked at what we call a zoning map, which is up there. And each one of the colored districts represents a particular, each one of the colors represents a particular district. The downtown is that kind of...
Dark brown.
Blood red.
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
Dry blood.
That is.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. Yeah, that kind of turkey brown color, which is disappointing when I look at it from the distance, but actually is a pre-specified zoning color. And we have it here too, on Google Earth. So the first exercise that I wanted to get people to do was, without referencing those two maps now, is to think about your sense of where downtown starts and ends, right? So think about the major arteries like Canal Street or Route 142, which runs south past the Marlborough Graduate Center. At least it is this week. And to the north along Putney Road. And so one of the things that's important to try and get a sense about is where do you think the downtown starts up? And where do you think it's less clear? One of the questions that we can actually review as part of the downtown master plan process is whether in fact we've given enough space for the downtown. And then whether it matches up with people's perceptions of where downtown is. So some of this is a character thing, some of it's a built form thing. So many people would, from another community, would come to Brattleboro and drive up and down Main Street and have a sense that that was downtown. And so that once you've stepped off Main Street very far, you're not in downtown. In Vermont, people's sense of downtown can literally alter tree by tree. So, or they'll say things really ridiculous like downtown Halifax, which really stretches your imagination, right? Because there is really... You've been there?
What would that be?
Yeah, really, exactly. It's where there are two dump pickup trucks next to each other, I guess. I don't know. Sorry, that was probably a little unfair. So...
Municipally, politically incorrect.
Yeah, there's that as well, but it probably has Trump stickers on the back, so it's all right. So, so there's that. And then there's the, so that's the first exercise. So what we thought we'd do is actually, how many, we've got an even number of people or an odd number of people?
Even.
Even, excellent. So the idea is that we would break into pairs, and we've even got workspaces. So we've got one here, and we've got one there, and then we've got another one out in the other part of the office. And each one of them comes with one of these goofy things like this that you can write on, a huge Post-it note, and then we can put them up. So the first question that I want you to answer is where do you think, for you, and it's a personal thing, it's not, you don't have to like match it to the maps, but where do you think the downtown starts and ends? What are the boundaries of the downtown?
And we can define downtown as whatever...
You could define it as from Hannaford's down. Does that entirely up to you what you think, what your sense of downtown is?
But the point is for like the master planning process.
What we want to use here is you guys as a focus group to actually test whether the existing boundaries of the downtown that we use in the zoning map correspond with people's perception of where downtown is. And it goes to the question of the form or the character versus the uses. So the reason why I referenced the Main Street is if you look at both sides of Main Street between Flat Street and High Street, all the buildings are roughly the same age, conform on some levels architecturally that, you know, in terms of height and building material and those kinds of things. There are other downtowns, for instance, Greenfield or even Keene, where for whatever reason taller old buildings got knocked out and have been replaced with single-story storefronts and so forth, right? So the character is more broken up. We, for whatever reason, haven't suffered that on Main Street, which is probably good. Right, but what about Flat Street? You know, what about 142? You know? Is Marlborough Graduate Center really downtown, or is it not? Why is it or is it not? So that's what I want to try and get at in the first exercise. And we'll, I thought we'd spend like 10 or maybe 15 minutes total on that, and then we'd move to the next question, which is people's perceptions of where you feel comfortable going. And that would vary according to time of day or day of the week. And then in terms of what kind of activities you're doing, or whether you're with kids, or whatever it is. So, again, imagine that it's a, it's going to basically be a mapping exercise. You can just list the areas, you can label them, you don't have to, you don't have to map it. But you could actually use one of these maps to do this. That's why the purpose of the maps are here. And there's pencils.
And how would that, how would that inform the group, that second question?
Yeah, and you mean comfortable going in terms of safety, or?
Yep.
Do you want to tell us all the questions, and we'll go to the map and do all at once?
Let's do the first one first, and then, and then we'll work on the second one. So, so the safety question is, it's your personal safety, which is a perception issue, but there's another aspect to this too, which is, with your experience of downtown, what do you observe? Like where do people hang out? Where are good spaces to hang out? What's comfortable, what's uncomfortable? So for instance, it's reasonable to think that Plinny Park would be a really good place to hang out, or to relax, or wait for a bus. But it may actually be that it's not like, I mean, this is hypothetical, but it may actually be that the last time you did that, you didn't actually feel like good about it because you got covered in diesel fumes, or whatever it is, right? So if we were trying to improve the amenity of the streetscape, or improve aspects of downtown, or change downtown so that it was more resident-friendly, or something such as that, what would we need to do to actually bring that about?
So it's not just safety, it's also like comfort?
Yeah.
Areas that need work.
Right, right. So it's a personal safety question on a certain level, but it's also the familiar, so your familiarity. So do you park in the parking garage during the day? And are willing to retrieve your car during the day? But are you unwilling to park your car in the parking garage at night because you don't feel safe? Or would you do it on a Monday, but not on a Saturday, or all those kinds of questions?
Well, there's a tree on Main Street that I wouldn't want to park my car in.
Yes, listen, I observed a tree today that disturbed both of us deeply. It was like something out of a movie. I don't know how to describe it. First of all, there's bits of tree.
There was a plethora of bird shit.
Yeah.
I mean...
Just like a carpet of it.
I don't know what happened there.
Just near the Old Stone Church.
Yeah.
So it was like some kind of Alfred Hitchcock thing that had happened.
Thank you for the warning.
Well, there was a murder of crows flying around downtown a couple days ago.
There you go.
One of them ended up dead on the park in front of the murder house. All right.
All right, so you get it?
I think so, yeah.
The perception mapping, it ends up being pretty useful, and partly because this is a relatively, you know, new and fresh group. It's good to capture this stuff, and then it's good to actually work through the exercise of how to do this so that when we do it with other groups, we can get better at doing it. But at various times in various places, people have made apps for phones and stuff, and then handed them out to teenage girls and said, okay, walk and then record with this app on your phone, which is constantly giving out, you know, GIS coordinates, what your sense is. You know, and use a word like sketchy, or whatever, you know, using teenage terminology so that they're, you know, they can then grade it. And then looked at some things as basic as lighting, sidewalk design, whether the trees obscure things more than they should, or what, what are the triggers? And, you know, in different neighborhoods, it also points to the relative isolation between different social groups. So if we were in parts of Connecticut and there was an informal labor market that was based at the Walmart parking lot, or the Home Depot parking lot, which is pretty commonplace at this point, some people would be more or less comfortable waiting for a bus outside the Home Depot parking lot at 5 o'clock in the morning because it's a labor market that's happening in real time. And they're just not comfortable doing that. And, but we don't get that here, but there's, you know, an out of the south that's daylight bruise, and where to find them is that's a common land use or character issue there.
Okay.
So, yeah? Okay, so, 1, 2, 3? Okay, so 1, 2, and then 3 is the little round table.
Ready?
In the other part of the planning office, you know.
But then, like, I live, I live, right? About here. Within that scope.
Yeah.
Just jot your names in the corner of the map or something, so we know who's this, it's no big deal. You'll be graded.
Okay.
Cool, the others are coming. Maybe they're not.
We highlighted our houses too.
Oh, that's really good. Okay.
It was interesting what we used to be thinking, actually. It was interesting what we thought.
We talked about them, but we didn't want them.
Okay, so that's really, so, okay, so there's this whole elaborate thing about this, right? And actually, those of us who've had kids or worked with kids will watch this so that your sense of awareness of where you are expands slowly and then big the leaps. Until then, either you are allowed to access the family car, or you somehow find yourself in the family car without their permission. And then your sense of your spatial world grows again, right? So, so that you started, so that you started from your houses, or that your houses were a key point for your sense of where things are, is actually really interesting, but is also, yeah, it's like part of the process. So, okay. Just as an aside, so I used to teach this kind of thing, and I used to teach it in a university in upstate New York, but most of the students were from Long Island, so I used to ask them to draw a map of New York. And they would have this huge map of Long Island with incredible detail, specifically which malls they went to. And then the rest of New York was that big, and then there'd just be this little dot going Syracuse. And that was it. And there was no information and no recall on anything that happened between Frog's Neck and their dorm room. Because as far as I was concerned, nothing of interest happened between Long Island.
They were asleep in the car.
Yeah.
Where in New York did you think?
Syracuse. It was, so yeah, and huge Long Island, and then the rest of the state of New York was just like tiny little block. And then Canada. It was really good, it was actually...
Well, they're not making the New York cover of that one.
Well, yeah, and the other funny story about this is the cover from the New Yorker, right? It shows incredible detail for Manhattan, and then nothing in the middle. And then right on the very top edge of the, of the, of the map is, is it, did it actually say California? Or the other, or the other coast or something?
Yeah, there's like Hudson River, a little bit in, you know, Jersey, and then Los Angeles.
Yeah, absolutely nothing, and then LA, that was it, yeah, right.
Pretty much a New Yorker's view of the world.
Yeah, which is reasonable. All right.
No, excellent. All right.
So who wants to start off?
Who, one of you want to go first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I talk about hers, or does she talk about mine, or do we like talk about each other's?
We talk about ourselves, you know. I'll jump in if I think of it.
Yeah, just go, yeah, just start.
All right, so when we were thinking about downtown, we were both, we've both been in the house buying process recently. So we really were defining downtown as anywhere where you can walk to stuff that you need. Like shopping or groceries, like stuff to do and things like that. I have only ever lived on, on this side of High Street, Western Ave. So my downtown goes...
When you said this, sorry, I was looking down.
This side, this side.
West.
The side we're on.
So the north, north side?
North side, up here, at Oak Street in the vicinity.
Okay.
Oak Street, Spruce Street. So my definition of downtown is really skewed over this way. But both of us, both of us define downtown as going up Putney Road, me to about the last business that I know that's on Putney Road before you get to the West River, which is 40 Putney Road. And then...
The Ben Breakfast?
The Ben Breakfast. And then Kate is, goes right to the river.
I will, yeah, I went up to the Veterans Bridge. And then I like, I waffled on if I consider Putney Road downtown too or not, but its character becomes different. Like it might be downtown Claremont, New Hampshire, but I'm not sure it's downtown Brattleboro.
Right.
Okay.
And then we both went out Route 30 to before the Retreat Farm. The Retreat Farm is sort of our, our boundary.
That was our edge, and that was kind of...
Yeah, that's not downtown.
Because we kind of waffled, like we talked about, maybe that's where the switch is, but...
So it would include some of the Retreat Trails and things. My definition goes out Western Ave to a little past the Spruce Street, Cedar Street neighborhood. Like Solihull.
Okay, so Solihull is the edge of downtown for you?
Yeah.
But Kate was defining it out to the highway, which includes even more of those, those neighborhoods. For me, the southern boundary of downtown was the Wetstone. But then it also included...
So the Co-op is not downtown?
No, it also includes the Co-op and Marlborough Grad Center.
Oh, okay, so you've got two exceptions, like little blocks.
And the museum.
Okay.
That's like...
Wow.
But, but otherwise it is pretty true to the Wetstone. And I think that has a lot to do with the fact that I've only ever lived on this side of town. I'm gonna be moving next month to the other side of town, so...
Oh, really? Whereabouts?
Fully drive.
Okay, cool.
Kate drew her line.
I kind of followed the interstate right down to Generous Street. And then I cut over from Generous Street, I went east and circled all the way down Balver Street. I waffled on whether Morningside, because you asked me, is Morningside included? I don't think so.
So you would say that from Generous Street, on Canal Street, like where the Booger King is, that's downtown?
I would say that's downtown.
Everything from there?
Because when I was shopping for houses, those were my boundaries for those intersections. I said the Veterans Bridge, the end of Cedar Street, the exit to Interchange, Generous Street, and, you know, these things you don't access from Vernon Street, so I didn't really consider Vernon Street. And that was my, that was my downtown. That was what I was willing to purchase in. And to me, there were businesses that were easily accessible on foot from a home anywhere in that area.
So you're an east of 91 kind of gal?
Yes.
Yeah, that's really cool. So there is a rough limit to able-bodied walking, which is roughly two miles. Which doesn't account for terrain or snow.
But that came up a lot in our master plan, you know, what's east of 91 as the developed?
Right, yeah, the east versus west. Like 91 just acting as a real clear marker.
Yeah, that's what it was for me when I was looking at Brattleboro to move here, like kind of cool, kicky, or something like that.
Right.
That was my, my clear marker was there.
Cool, that's excellent. Okay. So anything else? I think we've got each one of your boundaries. So Kate, for you, down 142, you talked about Morningside and stuff, where did you, where did you end up settling?
I ended up not including Morningside. I kind of waffled on it. So I ended up settling just on your map, it's where the Vernon Street is written, so below some of the trains stop.
Okay.
And the other thing, like, I think I struggled with at the beginning is there were really two things that were downtown. Like, you wouldn't necessarily want to see skyscrapers growing, say, where my mom lives, on Highland Road, because that would be strange. But I consider that downtown when I talk about that area.
Okay.
So it was sort of like, you know, I thought about what you said about the character here being different, and it was different than there. I don't know. That's why I got a little hung up.
Okay, that's fine. It's good, actually. Does your mom walk from Highland downtown?
Yeah, my mom and my brother have a, they made a converted house, some duplex there, and they walk there and it's kind of creepy.
Cool. All right. You guys, group two.
You want to go ahead?
Sure. We had the same definition, actually, which is kind of funny. So we included the park, which name?
The Commons.
The Commons. We included that. We didn't include the Retreat Farm, so just right where the Commons ends on both sides. Didn't include the Ben Breakfast. And then we included the bank and the, the doctor's office that's right on, right by the river, but not all the other, like residential, like church area right back there. We included all the businesses on Linden Street, but not the houses behind it. We included the parking lot on High Street, and the part of the Brooks House that's on High Street, but no further. We included the Harmony, Harmony Lot, and all the businesses on Elliot Street, up until Hazel and McNeil's. Those are all within downtown, but anything past that, we didn't consider downtown.
So not TJ Buckley's or the fire station?
No. And then going down to the parking garage, and then included that lot right on Flat Street, included the Co-op, and included Marlborough Grad School, the Wetstone.
The new park.
The new park, yep. And looped back around to include all those buildings.
Okay.
What's the new park?
Cool.
It's on the river, right next to the museum.
Right on the waterfront.
Okay. Excellent. So what was your cutoff point, like south of the Co-op on Canal Street? Was it the Co-op, or did you go further down?
The Co-op.
Co-op.
No, we didn't go any farther.
So it was both the most southerly and kind of westerly point? All right. Kathy and Sean, what did you come up with?
Uh, we have a similarly centralized version, but more with dots instead of lines.
That's cool.
Yeah, with the northern part near the Commons. We did not include the Retreat, but I didn't even really think about it. I'm still so new, I barely know some of the retreats.
That's perfect, that you are so new and so unfamiliar is actually really good. So on reflection though, do you think the Retreat, the campus of the Retreat, the old part of the Retreat is in downtown or out of downtown?
I want to say out, but my own definition of downtown is so much based on history and aesthetics, so not on a practical reason. And then perhaps if I redefine my own definition, it would include that. I'm trying to also give weight to geography exactly, you know, how much should I consider the proximity of a certain neighborhood that could be downtown, but kind of like a satellite downtown?
Right.
So, so I did, so I wanted to start to think about that, but then it got too complicated.
All right, so you got, your northern limit is the Commons. Then, did you, how narrow did you get as you came down towards downtown, past the courthouse and stuff? Did you narrow right down? So Casey and Liz got really specific and tight, like the High Grove lot isn't very far off Main Street.
We didn't even quite get to that conversation.
Yeah, we just have a northern and a southern part.
Okay, so what's your southern part?
It's where Elm meets Canal Street.
Elm and Canal?
So sort of including Three Stones and the Little Deli across the street.
Okay.
And then up South Main to just before the first cemetery.
South Main as far as the cemetery?
Yeah, just the lower, you know, not the, not the big one, the...
The first one you come across?
Yeah. And then the grad school.
Excellent.
Although I was kind of considering the bridge, the new bridge, and sort of thinking that it would, it would make sense to include that, which is where, kind of where we ended.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Right, at the Vernon.
Also, one of the interesting things for us to think about is exactly what kind of influence that bridge project is going to have on traffic movements and land use patterns. And so, you know, Brattleboro's established, and so any kind of re, any kind of development downtown is really going to involve some form of redevelopment. We know the museum is interested in expanding. We know that there are various people interested in the future of the Marlborough Graduate Center, the building. And so, one possibility is if you, if you can imagine, let me just take away... So if you're just thinking about the map of Brattleboro and where people live, like residential addresses, the center point of Brattleboro is probably somewhere along Route 9, just west of 91. So in other words, you've got some residential up here, and you've got a lot of residential here, but in terms of household size and the number of households, it's clearly out here somewhere. So this effectively drags the center of Brattleboro back towards the river, but probably not as far as 91, right? So sometimes for very weird reasons, demographers and other geeks get into doing those kinds of things. If you were just to think about downtown, if they change the location of the bridge and change the intersections that go with it, which is what's going to happen, then the center of downtown, the center of activity might sort of, if you think the center of activity is kind of the corner of the block formed by High Street and Main Street and Elliot and Main Street, so that one block, central block, this change might drag the center of downtown a little further down, right? Just because the activity patterns will change. So that's the kind of thing that I think... So that's the kinda thing that I think would be useful for us as a group to think about. It's made complicated in the negotiation phase because we don't really know what's gonna happen to the existing bridge now. We assumed that it was just gonna become a bike head bridge, but some, it's not entirely clear what New Hampshire is really gonna do with it.
How many years off?
Two.
Just two, wow, it's pretty soon.
Yeah, twenty twenty, construction's twenty twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm realizing you're biased this whole exercise by only giving us this half of the town. You know, if you, if the, if the map we were given or like to look at actually included all of that, that makes my definition of like what is downtown entirely different.
Oh, really?
It would have been looking more like what Kate was saying, and it's basically like that whole part, that whole east part of the highway.
But think how big the map would be if you went street by street on that scale.
No, I know, but it's, you know, if you're thinking like this is Brattleboro, right? Like not discounting that entire half of what is actually still our town.
Right.
And say, what is downtown, it's like, oh, well, it's kinda all that stuff over here, you know?
Well, I mean, it reminds me of when we did the town plan, that, you know, the realization was that everything out here that's dark green is really rural. But when most people think and start talking about Brattleboro, it's some version of the Route Nine corridor, or the Putney Road corridor, or this.
Yeah.
And that's what they, when, when they start talk, and so even if they're talking about the character of Brattleboro, it's not that they're talking about the sugaring and the vegetable growing and all the kinda stuff that actually is the dominant land use out here. They're totally focused on whether, you know, McNeils or they have this, their perception of what Brattleboro was made up of is where they go and what they do when they're in Brattleboro. You know, and, and that's true of any space, so that's actually one of the interesting things about the exercises to your, for you to reflect, you know, for us to kinda capture that and reflect on it. Cause it's actually, that's one of the things, that's why I told the story about students in Syracuse. Where they had no conception of, and, and because they drive at eighty miles an hour, it's not like they have any sense of how far it actually is from Long Island to Syracuse. They just know in terms of exactly how many minutes it takes and how much gas. You know, and so there's, what they're measuring and what they're looking at and what they're thinking about are really different. Whereas if you ask a good truck driver, they're actually gonna be fairly accurate about the number of miles and how long it takes and all that kind of stuff. So most people's perception of Brattleboro is actually, you know, particularly for those people who don't live here, it's built around this, cause that's what they use, you know? Or are familiar with. All right, so.
Well, they're built up and then there's downtown.
Right, and I think that the other thing is, you know, it's, what's interesting also for me, because, you know, I gotta sleep with this map in my head. So, you know, literally building by building, I know exactly what the zoning district is, I know how tall it can be, I know what use it can be, I know who owns it. So it's really hard for me to get out of my own head about this stuff.
Do you use that to put yourself to sleep? Keep you awake?
I wait, I, it, it wakes me up, yeah, around about three. So, yeah, so, but so I, you know, in other words, I'm not a kind of reliable witness of whatever you wanna say. Like because I've got the kind of insider knowledge that I have and work with it every day, it's different for me. So I know, it's hard for me to step back and think about those other things. Okay, so what's interesting is the commonality, I think, but also each one of you managed to describe something that didn't actually conform to the zoning district. Which is sort of also pretty interesting. So let me, let me take you and give you kind of an example of what I was trying to get at with the second example, and we can jump into that. So for those of you who don't, this is actually a really great shot from Google Earth. It's a great shot because this guy looks like he's just had his hand cut off or something, I don't exactly know what he's doing. But that's okay. Um, but what you do is you get this great shot of the bridge, right? Which may or may not become a bike head path, right? And then you have, this is the, this is eleven Arch Street, so you can tell now that I know more than I wanna know. And this, this is Arch Street, and it folds, it's very steep just past this um, fire hydrant, it drops down really dramatically. And then this street goes behind all these buildings on Main Street, right up to Hooker Dunham, so it's quite a, and it goes to Dirt, just around the bend. And it's bounded by the railroad tracks on the other side. And it's kind of a hangout space, it's sort of interesting architecturally, it's interesting socially, it's really a little bit different. You can see it to some extent, if you're standing down here at the new, at the park on Depot Street and you look across, you get a great view of the back of these buildings, it's actually really varied and.
That's pretty cool.
It's actually very cool.
My young man was killed on the tracks, so.
Right, right, and so many people have different levels of awareness of what's down here and would feel more or less comfortable about going down here depending on who they were with or what time of day it was or under what circumstances they were willing to visit. So that's kind of, so there's a physical safety perception issue here, but there's also just kind of a, it's hidden. And so it's how much awareness do you have of what, what's down here?
You know, we didn't even list that in our group of things, probably cause we'd never think to go there.
Exactly, exactly, and so part, and so part of it is just how much familiarity you, you have with, with a space like that and whether you regard it as something that's got potential to be opened up.
I used to work down there and we took our prom photos down there.
There you go, right, exactly.
For me, that's like.
Like it's fine, right? Yeah, exactly, exactly, and then for other people it's not, and the same people had the same reaction with the parking garage. Most, most people I know have some reservation about the parking garage. And then those other people who are just like, it's fine, right? Um, it depends on how many Clint Eastwood movies I think you've watched to see whether you can cope with the parking garage, you know? Um, so.
What is it, Make My Day Alley?
We should probably rename it that, yeah, that would be good actually, we'd probably get better visitation. So that's the first one, and then let me try and um, pop out to another space, oops, that wasn't good. Um, yeah, you might feel.
They pop out way up.
You might feel a little bit s- um, sick while I do this.
It's very high tech.
Can we include the island in downtown? Oh, no, that's me.
That's me.
Well, actually, you know, you kinda raised an interesting point, cause.
Will they give it to us?
Uh, no, but they might make us responsible for it even if we don't want it to be, which.
Was this something that we can um, start a letter writing campaign about, like what to do with the old bridge, kinda?
Hmm.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the issue is, is that New Hampshire wants to wash its hands of it, and they sort of have with the one on Route Nine in Chesterfield. So there used to be a not-for-profit that took on responsibility of maintaining the old bridge across the Connecticut there. And then for whatever reasons, that group fell apart, and then like, and the state of New Hampshire is like, fine.
Yeah.
But we don't, you know, so no one really knows what's happening with it anymore, which is a little odd.
The Monad North Conservancy is really looking for a way to get people to be able to travel through Conservland from Brattleboro all the way across.
Yes, yes, and we are happy to work.
Wouldn't this be a fantastic opportunity?
Yes, we are happy to work with them, and so there, the interesting part about it for us to some extent is that, um, trails, recreational trails are now their own kind of economic driver. And so, um, let me just see if I can do this properly, here we go, this is excellent.
Woo-hoo.
All right.
In my neighborhood.
So Dunkley's Machine Shop, right? This area here, let me just turn it around a little bit, this is the parking lot, it's obviously summer.
This was the end of our downtown, that strip mall.
That's interesting, okay, so the strip mall, so is there something about the character of the strip mall? I mean, it's actually a really nice old building in front.
But you don't include any Y T, which is just right past that.
Yeah, we thought that that was beyond the normal confines of downtown.
You did, okay, that's interesting. So what about?
But pierogies were in.
Oh, they were.
Because they're just pierogies or?
I actually thought of him when we were.
Yeah. Okay, that's good to know, um, so then what about this little street here? Just, hang on a second, let's see if I can get up here.
On the street, uh, wedge.
The wedge.
Right, the wedge, exactly.
Now, we did not include that.
All right, so what's, I don't know if I'm running out of.
I would've. Forgot that.
Okay, here we go. So depending on which way you approach this corner. That was a bit ugly, we just smashed into that house, uh, okay. All right, so this is this interesting building that at some point used to be, oops.
It was called Lobrium originally and uh, Superfresh.
Yeah, it used to be Superfresh, right?
Mm-hmm.
In an earlier iteration, and now it's a residential structure.
Ooh.
Um, which is also interesting, it's actually a really nice space inside, I think.
It is, yeah.
And then this is the corner of TJ Buckley's, for some reason, I don't know, it's a very fuzzy photo, but it's getting a little bit crisper now. So if you were to approach this corner from up here on Elliot, is this downtown or not downtown?
Definitely isn't mine, definitely.
Me too.
Both you guys?
Not in ours though.
Right.
It's downtown in my world, uh, downtown would like include like one eighteen Allen.
Yes.
Like even further past us.
Okay, so is there something about the character of this little piece here that makes you feel like this is not downtown?
Doesn't have sidewalks.
Yeah.
It should have sidewalks. Yeah, right, to me it's like there's no sidewalks.
Yeah.
There's no reason to real.
It's residential.
No, you didn't walk straight up.
There's no reason to actually go there.
Are you just walking the middle of the road?
No, I know, boy.
You're going back to your house, which is also residential.
There's, there's no there there, there's no, well, there's the, there's the cafe.
Place to walk to.
There's the cafe on Elliot Street.
There's no destination.
Right.
There's the rooster cafe, there's any Y T, there's the shopping.
Right, so okay, so. So there's a character thing, and then there's kind of a use, i- it's a bit of a subtle or not very well figured out distinction that I'm making here, but we've got residential uses downtown. This, the, the form and the structure, this is clearly an old commercial building that's been repurposed as residential. Um, that's the inhabitants' vehicle, and then this is residential.
They also have a, there's a bike shop though, and below that building.
Is it?
Oh, Stanley's.
Bike shop.
Stanley's Place? Yeah, down behind this is the bike, is a motorcycle shop, right?
Well, to me, and I walk this every day, it's because when you pass McNeils, um, there's a long like chain link fence of just nothing, and it's like, I walk a little faster and that's when I know I'm out of downtown. And once you get there, that's when you get TJ Buckley's, and that's where that road is.
So.
So it's like an emotional, emotionally it doesn't feel like downtown.
Right.
So you walk past the chain link fence part in a hurry because it feels like.
Trepidations.
Because then it starts to feel like kinda sketchy, to use the teen girl phrase, and at night.
It's actually plank jumps.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And it just, it doesn't feel like downtown to me anymore, it feels a little more scattered, a little less intentional.
Okay, okay. And so then what's interesting is whether this area, this neighborhood, has the potential for redevelopment that would be more appropriately described as downtown, right? Um, we actually had a very long dispute with the owner of this property about whether this in fact was a storefront or an apartment, believe it or not.
And what you can see the.
It's not supposed to be an apartment, it was at one point a storefront.
I think, I, no, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna, you know, it's like I can ima- I can imagine this built differently, like taking care of the sidewalks maybe better. I can imagine like a, a cool little restaurant in that house and then like a cool little shop and that, you know? So it really, it, to me, it's, there's like an aesthetic, you know, it's like rundown and you're not mu- using it because of that and because the businesses aren't there. But I could easily see that there would be businesses there, or there could be businesses there, right? That would serve as a little theater and then it's right across the apartment building and, you know?
Maybe someone would go to that breakfast place more, if it were a little more appealing.
Uh, this is obviously taken before the rest of the rooster moved in, which is, so it, it seems to be doing okay. I mean, I think that that's, well, it's an interesting example, cause that, to use the modern terminology, that's activating that corner in a way
Yeah.
that the previous cafe never managed to do.
Hmm.
So, um, okay, so let's talk about, um, a street with some degree of notoriety, which is Elliot Street. So those are the two, the, I just wanted to use those. Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna call on your intimate knowledge of Elliot Street. And whether you will determine whether you are part of the problem or part of the solution, okay?
Okay.
All right, so.
You can just go straight to that little sketchy park, which is the only park that I hesitate to bring my kids to play.
Oh.
Oh, really?
And I've taken them there, but it's like, eh.
It's got an unofficial name, which is not very appealing.
What's his name?
Drug dealer pub.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, in terms of the actual things.
Deal apart.
Yeah.
Little kids can play on.
Right.
It's not that useful, because like there's concrete and the, the swings are high and.
And it's kind of sunken, so that it's not so.
We have, um, so in our, in one of our neighborhood uh, Facebook groups, we have a reactive conversation about revitalizing that park.
Yes, there is actually.
There's a lot of interest from the neighborhood.
Yes, and in fact, the Green Street Promise Community's picked that up, I don't know why, it's, I think I've got it slow.
She's moving too fast for it, let's just gotta think. And I have to go, having fun.
There's my house.
Uh, the one with the rainbow fence.
This one? So, okay, so here's the park, all right, so, um, okay, so is this park downtown or is it out of downtown?
We said no.
He said yes.
He said yes.
Okay.
I think I would put it out of dow- downtown, it's here, so it's like.
Okay.
Yeah, I think my downtown ends kind of at the Red.
If the programming was changed so that the park, see, it's, it's shuffling, it's, it's lagging. So if the programming, programming of the park was changed, say that it catered to a broader range of ages and updated the kids' equipment and so forth, maybe even this slope.
Whoever proposes that is in for a world of hurt, let me just say.
That's okay.
Been there, done that.
Yeah, so this slope along here is actually quite steep and you could make it, you could, you could step it so that you had a, an amphitheater.
Yeah.
Right, and so then, you know, and just in a wild world, money's no object, lots of enthusiasm. Then you can start having, you know, Shakespeare in the Park or something crazy, right? You could start doing things or thinking about things that were, uh, you know, a broader range of uses and hours and time. So there would be more energy and human presence in the park, and so whatever was the sketchy aspect of the park would hopefully diminish over time and the active part would increase, right?
When, when we were house hunting, we looked at the house that was right across from the park.
Yep.
Um, it was on sale for like forever, but um, you know, before we looked, yeah, before we looked at it, it was like two thirty in the afternoon and it was, we hung out in the park while we were waiting for the Realtor, my daughter and I, when she was five or six.
Yep.
It felt really comfortable, we got done looking at the house, it was starting to get dark, and the park was like,
Uh-oh.
Let's not go there, no, you cannot.
I do think a lot of it's in my head, like.
Yeah.
I, I entirely acknowledge that it's in my head, but.
That's okay.
Like I think it's a perfectly fine place to live.
I think that everybody's got a head full of the same, well, everyone's making the same kind of judgments that you're making, that's why we're still here. So that's perfectly reasonable, it's just how do you shift it or, you know, can you shift it or what do you need to do to shift it? And so part of it is, you know, how do we regard this park? And is it part of the downtown or some other kind of a neighborhood, what is this neighborhood if it's not downtown? You know, what do we mean by that if it's not downtown, um?
Well, part of my reaction was, there were adults hanging out in the park without any kids.
Right.
There's that guy.
Yes.
What's in that outfit?
Your neighbor?
They wore the face.
Okay, so I think, they're thinking his hand just said.
I think that's the same guy who was over by Arch Street.
That was that.
He was the Google guy.
He's just following around the track.
And he's gone, so come on dude, just buy it, will you? All right. Okay, so thanks for coming, Kate.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, it's good, see you later.
Can you give that to Sue?
Sure.
Thanks.
Um, all right, so um, let's go back down, so, so we, we've started to touch on the very vexed and difficult topic of daytime, nighttime, who's using the facilities for what purposes, whether it's illicit or legitimate or whether it might be illicit and you're not really sure, but, right?
I was gonna jump in with your comfort thing and familiarity, I think there's, that's, now that I'm reflecting, that's a big part of it. I feel entirely comfortable walking around my neighborhood at night with my kids.
Right.
But I know all the houses, I know almost all my neighbors, if I see somebody I don't recognize, you know, then I can like.
Clock that.
Judge them or whatever, you know? But I, I, you know, it's like most of the people I'm walking by, I know who they are.
Right.
And I just, I. And I just, I feel more comfortable, cause I, I've been there a few years.
Right, right, and that familiarity is, you know, it's part of your survival kind of technique as well. See you later. So, how would you describe, now, you know, now that you've been living here a couple of years, how would you describe the kind of street activity and whether, you know, just how would you describe it?
Um, street activities.
Yeah, just, you know.
Who's walking around?
Who's walking around? What are they doing?
Um, I see a lot of actually families with kids.
Yeah, right.
Walking, there's a, that's actually a big travel corridor.
Yep.
Um, between, uh, Bird Street and Point's kind of west and north, there's a bunch of neighborhoods, so if I'm like on the map up, um, up here.
Right.
These neighborhoods all walk down Elliot. They go through the park, uh, in the summer, there are a lot of kids playing in the park.
Yep.
At certain times of the day. It's also near a couple of schools. Um, a lot of dog walking. Um, most activities at it's families with kids, it's dog walking. At night, when the bars let out about two thirty, there are loud drunken conversations westbound.
Yes.
I mean, again, they're usually harmless. You hear that kind of things, people are traveling again back to their neighborhoods with, after they've had a few beers.
Where's my car?
Now, on the other hand, I mean, do I see like, things that are sketchy, and have I seen things that are sketchy happening? Yeah.
Yeah.
So I have seen some of that too. I mean, to me, like, I'm, I'm like on my soapbox, so the biggest things to me for this neighborhood are, there's a really like, there are people who live there, some of whom have lived there a long time, who really actively care about the neighborhood. And I think just like simple improvements would be better lighting in the park, flowers, trash cans in the park.
Right.
And just like stuff like that, I think would, um, you know, it's like, it is kind of lipstick on a pig, but I think it actually does go pretty far to how people feel. If you're coming into a neighborhood and you wanna do something sketchy, but you're surrounded by flowers and, you know.
Right.
Yeah, you're gonna start like thinking, maybe I better do my business elsewhere.
Right, right.
There's a little bit of resistance here. It's not safe for me to do my thing, cause people are watching.
I think they call that flower power.
Okay, that's good, that's excellent, that's really good.
That, it does have a fun water thing there, doesn't it?
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was broken in the paint in the summer, but they did fix it.
There's nothing you can really do about like peeling paint on people's homes, can you?
Not easily, not over mine.
Do you provide paint?
We actually were thinking about, as part of the town plan process, we talked about the so-called Neighborhood Seventeen. I know, it sounds like something out of, uh. Yeah, right, but, uh, Neighborhood Seventeen is bounded by South Main and Canal and the high school. And it's a highly varied neighborhood. Some of it's very dense, and some of it's in very poor shape, a lot, it's got a lot of rental apartment properties, and a lot of it is nice homes in varying kind of conditions, single family homes. What we thought we'd try and do is figure out how to actually encourage people to, you know, do something like paint their house. And so figure out.
A lot of towns do do that.
Yep, so what we were thinking of, but we never could figure out a way of doing it, was to actually award a prize for the best rent, you know, the best paint job on the street, and then if people showed you how much it costs for the paint, that you'd you'd say, okay, whoever wins this, you know, will pay for the paint that you used. Assuming that you didn't hire some professional crew. Pay ten thousand, you know, in other words, there had to be, you know.
The paint only.
Yeah, and, and do it yourself, you know, an urban homesteader kind of thing, rather than somebody rocking up and paying thirty thousand dollars to have somebody paint their house. Right, that wasn't gonna cut it, but, you know, if you're out there every weekend, then actually, yeah, we'd be up for that. But, um, so we, some idea we could revisit. But, yeah, and there are other, towns have got other techniques for that. So. Yeah. Alright, so, let's, um, well, why don't I open it out and just say, I've shown you now two key spots, sort of in that lower part of downtown. But if you, for instance, how many people know where the Harris Lot parking lot is in Harris Street? How many people are familiar with that area? We could go for something completely different. Let me.
I don't consider that sketchy at all.
It's not. But it may not be the bestest ever use of it. So let me, let me, let me, um, see if I can zero in. Yeah, it's better, it's, it's a lot of parking. We think we, yeah. No. Yeah, no. Have to orient myself here, this is a bit difficult. The other thing when you, when you happen, when you start doing this, is that you begin to see just how much blacktop. You know, uninterrupted blacktop, actually. We've got kind of hanging around. Uh, I just need to figure out. Okay.
There you are.
Right. So we need to get that little person and drop her here.
I, it's interesting, I learned a lot about where it feels comfortable at night in Rattleborough, thanks to Pokemon Go.
Oh, really?
On, on date nights, after we had dinner, went to a mover or whatever, my husband and I would often play a game, walk around downtown.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's all the spots and stuff, and there are some like really nice spots that, you know, no one ever goes to.
Yep.
Except, you know, with their Pukastops or whatever.
Yes.
It's a great side effect. It was really fun to
I don't know what I'm doing here.
See Rattleborough at midnight.
It's actually very cool. Alright, let me, I'm gonna tell you where I'm trying to go, cause all you're seeing now is mass. Oh, what's that?
By Richard's group, Emily Cheese, and about back of the Catholic Church, so.
Are you trying to do Google Street View?
Yeah.
You might, they might not have recorded back there.
I think that that's my problem. I think that's why it's smudgy.
You might wanna go to Main Street and see if you can put an arrow down that road.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Now I just need to decide where that is.
But you could still, uh, get a nice view of Paris, if that's what you want.
Um, what I'm really trying to do, which is proving much harder than I thought it would, is get, oh, here we go. Excellent. Excellent, um. Yeah, okay, this is working, I think. No, we're gonna go down a block, so watch this. We're gonna go up. Up, up, come on.
You can't turn left there, it's one way.
Yes, but you can on Google Earth.
Yes. Yeah. One of the advantages of Google, of the, of the virtual world is that you can turn across the traffic. Ooh, it's gonna make us not do that. Oh, that's weird.
It's a really fast car going by.
So the point that I'm trying to make here, in a very fumbly way, is yeah, we don't get to go down this street. And also, this is the other really weird thing about Google Earth. It goes from daytime to nighttime without any real warning, which is just too weird for me, but, okay. So look, it's dark, and we can't go down here, cause it's scary and dark. But, how many people are familiar with Harris Street? This is the old Verizon Telephone Exchange, which in its day would have been full of people and activity and lots of really big pieces of equipment, and now it's got nobody in it, and just a bunch of computers.
I walk there all the time.
Right, so Liz knows this area really well. How many of the rest of you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so how many?
Harris Street or Place?
Harris Street it is, yep. So how many people have stood here and then looked across this parking lot and wondered why in fact this is a parking lot, given that you have a stunning view straight down the river?
So true.
That's a great question.
Connects to our street.
Well, it used to be a restaurant that took advantage of the view.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The town wrecked that.
Let's not, let's not dwell on that, shall we?
Isn't it a private dwelling now?
Yes, gone back to private dwelling. It used to be a dentist office before that.
Yeah, I used to go there.
I used to go there too. I thought it was really cool to be drugged up and looking at the window.
Oh, gorgeous.
Okay, so, so thi- this is a, this is a different cut on the same question. So those other two locations that I showed you were, um, to do with perceptions of safety and whether it felt like downtown or not. I would argue that if you were to stand here and you could see what I was trying to show you.
You think there could be better use made of that property?
Uh, hi- i- is that the highest best use of that property? And are we taking, uh, you know, are we making the most of valuable real estate downtown by having that be a surface parking lot?
I don't know anyone who parks down there. I forget there's a parking lot back there.
Right, that's one of the other really interesting things.
Demand for that property?
Of course, the businesses that are all down there, that all have lots of employees and
Yeah.
There are, I used to, I used to go down there for something, I don't remember what, but it was hard to find a parking spot.
It used to be, I don't know if it still is. Yeah, right, in the afternoons. Well, yeah, I think it still can get pretty busy. And so as you go down this street, Main Street, that would be, we'll see if it, we'll see if it, we'll see if we, we get back to, um,
Daylight.
Daylight. You watch, we do, which is extremely spooky. So, um, still nighttime it seems. Why did I just lose my little track? That's really weird. For those of you who play with this all the time, do you see what's happened here? There we go. Alright, so, going back to the character question. So, this drive-through thing, this wraps around, so you can actually go almost from Harris Street around, you can go in sort of where the, you know, where, um, the Gibson-Aiken Center is, and, and that Merchant's Bank Building set back from the street. So there's a loop there that gets you back around to here.
Yes, I've walked there many times, wondering why is this waterfront property a no man's land?
And why keep, why doesn't it connect to the street?
Yeah, and, okay. So, so in a similar vein to, um, to that early, I mean, this, 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 those, these two places, or these two, these two locations kind of connect, I guess. And what I'm trying to point out is that there's a bike and pedestrian connection in the back that is much more efficient and intact than the car path in the front, which is what this is, right?
You're leading us to a very good spot.
So, so that would be an amenity question or a quality of life question. So we've got the somewhat hidden assets or undeveloped assets, and then what is the opportunity for developing one? So that's just one example. I guess we could identify some others, but I, and I'm open to hearing from people, what are others? They think, you might, you guys might have some secret ones that you wanna share.
Secret passages?
Other better uses of property?
What's that?
Other better uses of property?
Yeah, sure.
Or at least just m- mandating a walkway.
Right. Trying, yeah.
Bike way.
Trying, trying to make a connection more obvious that it I would, I would describe that that walking path that Liz and I use all the time is an informal walking path, like it's a place you can walk as, or ride a bicycle. It works perfectly. You're off the street, you know, you're off Main Street, so you're a little bit away from the noise and the dust. It's really beautiful, you know, on a day like today, when it's blue sky and sunny, it's a stunning view down the river. You feel kind of special, cause you're usually on your own. Sometimes there's screaming kids at the daycare, but that's okay.
I can just run those kids, watch it.
Screaming very thoughtfully. Um, and so, what i- is, is there, is there potential to formalize that path a little bit, and make it more more of a feature, or, and or, do we really need the Harris parking lot, all of it, that way? Is there a better use that we can come up with? That would be an appropriate downtown use, right?
Velodrome.
Yes, we could have a velodrome. I don't know how useful it.
It's a bicycle circuit.
It's a.
Bicycle circle. In a cage.
It is bank, it's banked, okay, so it's, so the.
There's an Elvis Presley movie with the velodrome.
Okay, so it's banked, so the faster you, just like NASCAR, as you go up the bank, you go faster and faster. As you drop down, you lose speed, right? So the idea is to get up as high as you can, and then they're fixies, they're all fixed gear. So, when the rear wheel moves, the pedals are moving in a fixed relationship with the rear wheel, so the faster you go is the faster you have to pedal, and as soon as you, you can't stop pedaling, right? Cause it all is controlled with the position of the bike on a you only ever do it once when you don't know what you're doing. And, yeah, yeah, it's pretty ugly actually, cause you can't, like, you're just ready to take your feet off the pedals. Yeah. And then you can wear those, have you seen the Olympics with those little weird coney shaped bike helmets, so that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what that is.
The thing that makes me nervous about, I don't know, what you described is like, it's a nice place to walk, because um, cause I've walked down there, and it is nice, you're normally alone, and it's a nice view, um, but I guess, one thing that's kind of nice about, about it is that the parking lot means that people are coming and going all the time. And even though it's behind the buildings, I know that if like, it's not like a scary place to be, because there's activity. Yeah, so I guess whatever we would replace the parking lot with, I would hope that it is generating pedestrian traffic. Yeah, because it has the potential to become something like Arch Street, where it's beautiful, but nobody goes back there.
Right.
So, it's a place where people gather and hang out.
Right, right.
I would suggest that just a portion of the Harris Lot could be used for another use.
Right.
You know, like a sort of
Corner.
More park-like path.
Right.
Beginning there.
Right.
And going all the way down to, yeah. Arch Street.
So, if we think of, um, other like sort of hidden places that could be better utilized, should we bring them up now, or?
You can bring them up now, you can, if you wanna keep it a secret.
I've still got a couple of places that are sketchy that we haven't mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've got a few things.
Okay, so are you, are your secrets, the secret good places or sketchy places?
Um, so I have a couple of secret places.
Yeah.
They could be sketchy places too. Sometimes they're both. So, you can from, get from, yeah, the secret path, so if you go up Elliot Terrace.
Yep.
Because you don't say wanna live up Union Street, cause hypothetically, your mother lives on Hyland Road, and you live on Elliot Street, and you wanna walk, you have, you know, you have little kids, there's no sidewalk.
You don't wanna.
Hypothetically.
Union Street.
Totally hypothetically.
So you walk up Elliot Terrace, you can either go through the back of the school to get to Green, you can also walk up, there's like sort of a secret little path up Crowell, kind of directly across from Elliot Terrace. Um, sometimes there are sketchy people hanging out there.
Right.
But it's also, it's a, it's a good, it's a pretty area, and it's a good spot to walk.
Right.
And like if there were actual formal path, and maybe like a stair, and like, hey, access, foot trail access to Western Avenue here, and then vicariously from Western Avenue, foot trail access down to Elliot Street, more people might do it.
Okay.
Secret passageway, like in the game of Clue?
Yeah, another one is, um, behind the, um, is it Fau- was?
Fauvees?
Fauvees, Fauvees Pool, yeah.
Fabio's Pool.
No, I don't know, yeah, Fauvees, how do you say it, Jessica? Fauvee.
So behind, behind there, there's actually a really, um, beautiful, um, deep spot on the Whitestone
Yep.
That people go down to access with dogs, people wait in it, now, knowing what we've, know about Whitestone.
You're not doing that anymore?
You may wanna be careful, but I've still waited in it.
There's nothing wrong with it.
I think we saw that when we were walking along there.
Yeah, and so, that's also like another little area we were talking about, where, you know, it, it's it's like an interesting little spot, and if there were a way for people to access that for like, you know, fun, nice uses, it might be less graffiti showing up there periodically, and, you know, it's it's a nice natural feature, and it would also get people more engaged with the Whitestone River.
There's, there's another spot along the Whitestone that I used to take all the time when I worked at Knowing the New Theater. So, you go behind Knowing the New Theater, and there's a trail behind the church building.
Yep.
And Dunkley's Machine Shop.
Yep.
And you can walk right along the brook until you get to the. And you can walk right along the brook until you get to the.
Almost to the co- sort of, yeah.
Until you get to the, the um Pres, the, yeah, is that what it's called? Yeah.
To the Preston Lot. Yeah, yeah.
Um, and it it's usually really nice, but there are sometimes some
hobos.
Some, yeah, it's not like they're dangerous or anything, it's just, um.
Right. It's a hangout space as well, right?
It's a hangout space, yeah.
Um, so one word that we could use to describe that edge of the bank, which is really commonplace, um and you know, on some level, I think we talked about this when we were doing the Lower Whitestone Brook Study. So it's kind of interstitial space, it's private property, but it's the back end of private property, so that's that's seriously the case with Dunkley's and the church building and even New England New Theatre. It's difficult to restrict access to because there's a waterway and because people will find a way, there's always gonna be a good path opening up. And so the question has been, what do you do with this interstitial space and what do the people who are using that interstitial space really need? So if you're having a really bad day and you don't have anywhere to live, so you can't be inside and you're sick of the library or sick of getting kicked out of the works. Do you, you know, go and find a nice comfortable stone down on the corner of the Whitestone there near, you know, with the Sauso on one side and and um just hang out, right? It's relatively quiet, you can be left alone, you can, you know, relax, right? And if you're familiar with it, you can begin to feel very homely. And sometimes it's important to sort of try and figure out what people's needs are like that and whether in fact upending the use and changing those uses is actually destructive of something. But then there's the other part of it, which is, you know, without much oversight or anything, they are potentially also affiliated with these spaces. And that's their appeal, you know, and that's your whole teenage experience of, you know, right? And those kinds of adventures and all that kind of stuff. Um, so what I've got actually, it's a bit hard to see because of course Google is actually pretending it's night time.
Oh, yeah. So nice that that road's been fixed.
This is the end of Green Street.
There's a nice view up there.
Yeah, right. And so there's this crazy building up here, the Shri- Shrine.
Yeah, Shrineers Hall, yeah.
Shr- right? And then this is actually a pretty interesting building in its own right, it's got yoga studios and dance studios and stuff at the end of it. And then at this point, you're, you're basically overlooking the Harmony Lot.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Um, that's where the new retaining wall got built because this road was actually falling down. So now it's not falling down.
Ham designed it, I work with him.
Yeah, right, we're very happy about it, it's good.
I'm so happy too.
Yeah, so, um, so w- what about this little sort of pluggy end of Green Street, um.
It's so steep.
It's really real.
I would, I would totally use it except it's so steep.
It's killer, it's really steep, isn't it? Yeah, particularly in winter.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty scary. Uh, as a pedestrian, it's scary in winter. Um, okay.
It gets less steep in the summer. Yes.
Yes, and it's less slippery.
Except on those really hot days, it doesn't get less.
This, right, no, this whole, this whole section ices. And so you can be at the top here and then lose it and then just do this sort of weird like shuffle dance thing and end up down here grabbing something. I have grabbed the wall at this point, thinking I was about to go straight out into High Street.
Oh my god.
Yeah, yeah, it's really bad.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so.
But that wall is never fun to walk by.
Chunks of it come off all the time.
I, on either side, on the High Street side or that side.
Yes. I, I, I don't get it, yeah.
Except there was, I think the museum partnered with a photographer from, from Putney to do the, a photo installation along
Oh, I remember that, yeah, that was good actually, yes.
that wall, giant portraits of brown people, it was beautiful.
That's right, that was really cool.
Like I wanted to be there.
Yeah, right, right, okay, but apart from that, yes, it's.
Guys, I'm sorry, I gotta go.
It's okay, it's good, alright.
Okay, this is fun.
Feed me, feed, you can feed anything in later on if you've got
Sure.
places that you feel discomfort or unease or whatever. So actually Liz was gonna do this.
I'll, I'll tell her.
Okay, great.
Alright, okay, thanks a lot, Jessica. Alright, so what do you got, Liz?
Oh, um, Harmony Lot, sketchy.
It's just kind of like concealed at night.
Well, let's, I think it's one of those interesting things where it's nighttime flavor is really different from its daytime flavor.
On the other side of the buildings, you know, like everyone on Main Street can't see you, you're behind the building.
And there's, you know, bars there.
Right, right, okay.
Bye.
Bye-bye, see ya.
And then the parking garage.
Okay.
Um, but my sketchy place was walking from the end of Main Street to the museum. Because a cross.
End of Main Street.
It's like a crazy junction?
Cause the, yeah, cause Malfunction Junction, they don't let you walk directly across that street there.
Right.
They want you to go around, which I'm not gonna do.
Right, yeah, totally.
Right.
So, you know, they're really, you know, I mean, when the bridge comes and we're rethinking everything, I wanna walk right across the street like a normal human being.
Well, yeah, we don't do normal at Malfunction Junction, that's what it's called, Malfunction Junction. But um, it would ruin everything if it was normal. Um, but okay, yeah, that's a good point. Anybody else actually feel like there's some kind of weird traffic conflict with an intersection or something that just really grinds on you?
Um, yeah, some of the north parts of Canal Street, there are not, um, crosswalks where you want them and aren't enough of them.
Mm.
So, uh, so let's see where I lie, so, yeah, in in and around here, like when you're going, um, down Canal Street, uh, and you're going, uh, where do I be going? So you're sort of walking from the Co-op and walking south on Canal Street.
Yep.
Um, going by Home Street
Yep, okay.
and Clark, there's just, there aren't crossworks where you think there should be ones
Mm-hmm.
where there is one, you can stand there for a while and wait for a car to stop and.
Mm.
I don't know.
Right, okay. Anything else about, I mean, there, those are good amenity, traffic amenity, you know, quality of life factors. Does anyone else have anything like that? Anything else sketchy, Jessica, that you can think of, or you're pretty, you're pretty comfortable?
Well, you know, my definition of downtown tends over here, so.
Yeah, right. So what, okay, talk to me more about that.
Right, I, um, I think that it's the, I don't know, the feel of the neighborhood, or maybe it's the geographical, everything's lanced down there
Yep.
and then it starts going up over there and that means it has to be nice.
Yeah, the going up path is, yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Top- topography has a lot to do with it.
Right.
Um, uh, but also, yeah, um, I don't know, to me the, like, these are the suburbs or or, and this is, this is town.
Okay.
I, I don't know what it is for me, but I think it it has to do with, you know, property appearance, historical
Right.
historical buildings, things that are, things that are sort of designed to to look like they're from a certain time happens over here and it's so random and scattered over here. Um, to me, it's just a different character.
That's interesting.
I think that's what Katie said when I was drawing my line, she was like, well, some parts of town just have a different character. I was like, yeah.
Yeah. I think it is more varied, that lower section than I, not in, I think it was more in.
There's a lot of different neighborhoods.
Right, I think it was more industrial at an earlier point and then that's fallen away
Yeah.
and a variety of stuff has gone up in its place, is what I'd say.
Yeah, but there's so much less businesses in these neighborhoods
Yep.
and there's so much more, like, it's so much more mixed
Yep.
on the side.
Yep. Yeah, I think you're right. So Sean, you're pretty new here.
Yes.
So
Excuse me.
have you been walking around, I mean, so what's your sense? I mean, are you feeling?
I have not get gotten to walk very much yet. Um, I moved here in November and.
Oh, so you've been here winter only?
Yeah, winter only. I, my, my family's been here for.
It's not walking season.
Definitely not, and um, I've already slipped once or twice.
Oh.
But um, my family's been here twelve years, so I've been a visitor, but this is the first time I'm a resident
Oh.
and I have a definition of, um, of downtown based almost on well, the character, the aesthetics and the um, architecture and but it's, but that's a very New England-ish kind of a definition, I feel like. Um.
That's okay.
But so, so yeah, I, I, it goes back to the whole pockets of neighborhoods, you know, there's one part where clearly it's downtown, right in the heart of town, but then it becomes kind of residential and then there's mixed use right after that and.
Right.
So, um, so I, I, I guess the conclusion is downtown is a very subjective fluid word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's what we, I think we proved that tonight. I was like, on some level, I'm kind of blown away about how big or tight you've been able to draw downtown. So your office is on Western Avenue, do you think your office is downtown?
When I, the first month I started, I did, but now I don't, so.
Where is your office?
Huh?
Where's your office?
Uh, right next to the Trinity Church, on the Red Trinity Church. It's um, it's a law firm, Phillips Dunn, Trevor Carroll, across the street from Jim Maxwell's law firm.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, so it's.
And the old funeral, the old funeral.
Yeah, where's the church?
Oh, the old funeral home.
The, the, the old funeral home, remember? Right, yeah.
Where someone was killed there a cou- couple hundred years ago, I think.
Where's the Trinity Church?
Um.
Just west of.
Yeah, and uh, uh, my office is one forty-seven Western, so it's probably right after that.
One forty-nine or one fifty-one.
Something like that, yeah.
You know, is your, um, do you know the green place where Jim Maxwell's office is on, on your, as you're heading out?
Used to be O'Connor's office? It's tiny.
Okay, so you're heading west on Western Avenue, right? You get to the top of the hill and then there's a big green old house that used to be Timmy O'Connor's place and then Jim Maxwell's got it now. And then over the road, used to be.
It's a classic New England direction.
Right.
It's a cross, it's, it's almost a cross.
Across the road used to be, used to be where Lachlan's freshman girlfriend lived and is now a law firm, okay? It's like, this works perfectly. Right? Yeah, don't you know that one?
In, in relation to Berkeley Veller.
In relation to Berkeley Veller, this is a good point.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So it's
Yeah.
just before you get to that.
It's just before you get to Berkeley Park.
Okay.
Thank you, Jessica. But I know it as the place it used to be Lachlan's girlfriend's parents' place.
So do you consider that downtown?
As of now, no, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah, but um, when I first started.
But you can certainly easily walk there to downtown.
Yes, yes.
Do you guys walk, do you walk, do you have much activity at the courthouse? Do you have to go to the courthouse often?
Uh, not this one, um, not the local family. Yeah, I go to New Haven more than that one.
You go to New Haven?
And no one's really walked yet, but then again, it's, you know, I started in November.
Right, okay. So when you go downtown, do you walk downtown from your office or do you drive? Because you.
Drive.
Right.
Yeah, and even where I live, it's only a mile or less, I still drive.
Oh, okay. Whereabouts, which direction do you live in?
Uh, Oak Grove Avenue is where I live.
Oh, hmm, that's nice. That's where I'm moving to.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so would you, uh, do you regard Oak Grove as being downtown or just on the edge of downtown or out of downtown?
I think it's out of downtown, the, by the character and nature of the neighborhood.
More suburbanity.
Yeah, with the neighborhood school around the corner and, um, baseball fields.
Right.
But then you have, you know, the biggest hospital in the county right across the street, so then it suddenly becomes kind of active or
Right.
or hustle and bustle-ish again.
Right, okay.
So, um, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's downtown, I guess.
Right, it's actually kind of a tough walk to go from your place to, because you've gone down and then up.
Then you have to.
Definitely.
Oh my god, you have to.
I wouldn't be driving, I would, certainly wouldn't ride a bicycle. Um, okay, um, anything else you wanna throw in? So as you're getting more and more used to town, does your sense of it change, the downtown area?
Definitely, and um, and as I'm also kind of getting to learn the history of the planning commission itself
Mm-hmm.
in conjunction with the, um, zoning board and, um, I, I'm now starting to kind of get a better sense of the, the grand picture, I guess.
Okay, good.
And hopefully, hopefully in the near future, I'll be able to contribute a little bit more with, um, with some legal knowledge.
This is good. Uh, let me just see if I can get back, okay.
I wanna put in a couple of other secret passages.
You go on, do that, that would be excellent.
That I, I love, we use all the time, is on our walk to get to Green Street School with my daughter. Um.
She goes to Green Street?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
So we cross High Street, we go a couple of houses up, up High Street.
Mm-hmm.
And then we walk through the driveway of this house and everybody does it.
Yeah.
And there's a little passageway and you end up in the driveway of another house on Green Street.
Mm.
Yep.
And it's, it's just a common pathway, um, that we all use, which is
It's really good.
I always feel a little like, should we really be doing this? But I think, I think
Everybody's doing it.
like five or six dozen kids take that path every day, so it's, it's very well trod.
Yes, um, so do both of you know about the Green Street Promise Community project? And then that there is a program to try and integrate all these trails
Perfect.
through the school and around the school and total lot?
That's good. I didn't know about that.
Yeah, okay, so you should talk to, I'll talk to you about it.
It's gonna be sort of irrelevant, irrelevant.
Alright, I'll talk, I'll talk to you about it later, but, yeah.
Um, and then there's another one, um, we go to Brown and Roberts a lot from our house.
Yes.
So we take the dirt road behind the post office
Yep.
to get there.
I like that one too.
It's also good, it's also sometimes a camping area in the summer.
Yep.
There's a dirt road behind me.
Yes.
Yeah, there is, it's great.
Yeah.
And you can walk from the post office to Brown and Roberts.
Yep.
Yep, because you can get.
You want, behind there, behind the church and and through.
Yeah, you can sneak in through the church and then you're in the backyard of Brown and Roberts.
Yeah, you might have to hop a guard rail.
Yeah, it's not a biggie. That's the one I, that's the way I go to Brown and Roberts from here.
Yeah. So, but, you know, I've got my Saturday all mopped out. Gonna go explore.
It's the least we could do for you, Liz. Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so one last thing here. Take us down to an area that we should all know pretty well. Boing, okay, so Boys and Girls Club, Latches? Um, favorite building in Battleboro?
Those are both, the both men from the other Google Earth pictures, right? They're walking together, pictures fall.
Is that the guy with the backpack again? Okay, now I'm really getting suspicious. Alright, um, so this parking lot here used to be a, um, auto body shop. One of the things that's really interesting.
It's one of the brownfields.
Yeah, it's one of all the brownfields. This is definitely one of those. And how much auto-based use in and around downtown, particularly this side of Main Street, going out towards Flat and Frost? It's less now than it used to be when I moved to, to the area in the late nineteen nineties.
Mm.
Um, and so you can tell from this angle, which is kind of interesting, that this building and this building kind of have some features in common. That there's the brick material and there's the size and shape of the windows.
And they're owned by the same person.
And they're owned by the same person.
And they're, they're owned by the same person, which we won't go into right now. Um, and then there's this building, which sort of looks like what would happen, you know, for instance, if you had an ice building that was bombed out.
Like the Colosseum.
Oh.
I don't love that.
Yeah, um, they tried, but it doesn't quite work, but.
I think it does work, I think it's fine.
You think it's okay?
I like it.
Good, okay.
Is there controversy with the owner of these buildings?
No, it's just that they've been like this for a really long time, these two. And so this was, this.
I think it should have been the police station.
Yes. There was a project proposed.
Mm. Brilliant.
Somebody bought this parcel and, you know, I'm not sure what's happening with it now, but there was quite interesting redevelopment opportunities that were imagined for, for this parcel.
So I'll share one thing, when I first, um, my mom first moved to town and I had her, you know, walk downtown and we kind of did like a foot tour at night, we walked through this section and my mom looked up
Mm-hmm.
at the lights of the back, yeah, right there, the backs of those buildings, the light streets. Wow, I had no idea, you know, I was so far below the level of Elliot Street
Yes.
that you can see it when it's all lit up and I, she was like, I feel like I'm in a big city
Yes. Yes.
because it does have really that feel when you're in this area.
Yep. Yep, it does.
And it was, it was just interesting, like I remembered that, you know, she was new to town, that was her reaction.
My husband used to work in that building.
This one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's full of really interesting little businesses in here, yeah, yeah.
We almost moved into an apartment in there too.
Oh, okay.
Um, but.
Good commute.
As far as, I mean, that parking lot, it, it was really nice for us and him when it being a private parking lot that belonged to those buildings.
Oh, I get it, yes. A level of amenity that was really useful, yeah.
Um. Yeah, it was really nice.
Right. Do you remember when the Vietnamese food cart used to get here? Right, we miss that still.
And the, yeah, the burger one, that one.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, so, so the question is, if you look around here, this, this is the private parking lot that's at the back of, um, the Latches, so this is the Latches', you know, for guests. This is that little pathway that takes you across the bridge and across to the Co-op. This is Preston Lot.
That's a hangout.
This is definitely a hangout.
But the funny part is that the Latches has decided to just play awful music to discourage people from hanging out.
Yeah, classical music is a barrier to enjoying it, yeah. It's worked for me for fifty seven years.
And it reminds me of how the army used to play.
Right.
Um, what's that purple dinosaur?
Army?
Harney?
For prisoners.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a small world after all, on W P for thirty hours straight.
Wow.
Old dogs. Yeah.
And they wonder why they're residuous. I mean, really, you're gonna lose your mind.
Well, yeah, this was like in the Middle East, you know, like, for the war.
Okay, but, yeah.
My husband would say, you know, it wasn't so bad having a couple people yell once a day or twice a day. But having the classical music playing consistently every day, all day, was just torture.
I guess it would deter the wrong people.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Right, yep, yep, it's pretty hard to, it's pretty hard to stomach. So, um, okay, um, so thinking about this, so there's, I I guess what I'm trying to get at is this sort of a fairly abrupt transition. And if you look at, this is the Sam's building and it's apartments from here, basically here up, right? This is the Latches.
Mm-hmm.
This is only two stories, this is the Boys and Girls Club. I think they own the building now, so I don't think they're gonna go anywhere in a hurry, but from a sort of a development potential standpoint, you know, the space on top is what I'd try and draw your attention to. And then there's these spaces. This is probably some of the biggest area of privately owned, underutilized space close to Main Street that we've got.
Right.
It's like a, there's a break and then the next, you know, buildings, you could argue a pretty similar character to that.
Yeah.
So is is the dirt, is the dirt lot still owned by the biologic people?
Right. I think so.
Super simple.
Yeah. So, yeah. Um, so those are the other things that if you can think again, for those of you who spend a lot of time walking around downtown, thinking of spaces like that, that you think could tolerate some form of redevelopment, right? And so Sean, given that you're from somewhere else where there's probably been more, you were in Burlington, right?
Yes.
Yeah, right, so they don't have that much space hanging around.
No.
Because they've got a market.
Yeah, there, it's actually controversy right now of how mu- how mu- how high to build up because, um, yeah, it's so restricted there.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Hmm.
So, yeah, this is the.
It's a fire truck issue.
Right, so.
It's a colorful bus.
So this is, and, um, yeah, so this is a new service. This is the, I can't remember, it's a Megabus.
Oh, where does it go?
I read about that.
Boston.
Oh, yeah. What did I tell Mary?
Yeah.
Double decker.
Double decker with Wi-Fi. It's really cheap too.
What? What?
Yep. Did you tell her right now?
I'm like the president.
And so this is that little street that I showed you before, right? The little Y with Stanley's Motorcycle Shop down here and the Pierogies, which apparently make it downtown? Pierogies make it downtown?
Yeah.
Right, and then, yeah, so, alright. Alright, so, um, do do you want me to capture any other thoughts that you've got about this or? Any other little secret pathways?
I have a couple questions. Have there been, um, in this area, a lot of proposals or even
Yeah.
a proposal that, proposals that got rejected by the Development Review Board perhaps, or or related to that question, is are there well-known developers in the area that may, that are may or may not be controversial, but, you know, they're well-known as land buyers and developers?
Right. Okay, so your second question first. There are no well-known land developers with an interest in this kind of real estate and
Okay.
it's an interesting phenomenon, I think, not uncommon to smaller towns in this part of New England.
Mm-hmm.
Once you're outside of Chittman, once you're outside of Burlington and South Burlington and Winuski, things really fall off.
Yeah.
Um, and so none of this is likely to get redeveloped without a kind of a combined public-private program.
Lots of, lots of community voice.
Right, and then it's not entirely clear to me that there's a lot a really strong private market that would that would carry a, you know, a predominantly private development. So even if, even if public money was used to help a private developer build a mixed-use building that was made up of, say, I'll just wait for it to catch up, um.
Parking housing?
You know, say retail and office space on the first floor and then, um, housing above it, whether that would actually work. Quite apart, you know, just, it's, it's not really clear to me. So what I'm trying to focus on here, which is turning into a bit of an art project more than I was thinking. I don't know why it's doing this. There we go. Alright, so this is New England New Theater, and this is another Brownfield development site.
Mm-hmm.
So, Sean, bef- well before you got here, there was a building that looked very similar to this. It continued all the way to the, to the corner and then around. And it was a, used to be a paint factory back in the sixties and seventies.
Did it pollute?
Yep. They made, uh, road sign paint and they used to use PCBs in road sign paint, cause it would really glow, you know, like the same as if you drink it. Uh, and so when they were bored, they would paint the walls with it and it had floorboards. So it would drip between the boards down on the heads of the people below and in the basement and stuff. And so the whole place is kind of, was toxic. Um, so this is now owned by New England New Theater and we're still finding ways of developing that. This is a little parking lot area that's part public parking and part permanent parking for Co-op staff.
So I'm, I'll jump in with observation connected to with the conversations we've been having about the Whitestone thing, just to like
Yep. Yep. Right.
re-highlight this is, there is a lot of parking in this corridor.
Yes.
Like flat street, you know, from Maine all the way through here. And it's, I I think it's more than needed, but, you know.
Yep. Needed, right. That's really.
That's why we're studying this.
Yeah, it's exactly what I was studying. And then this building here, where this sort of streetscape is interesting. So this is on the corner of Elm and, uh, Flat. or is it, I guess it's Frost, thank you.
Frost.
Um, you did notice that I stalled out, I was like, whew, whichever is it. Um, and so this is, uh, Kiln Dry. Um, and it's longstanding business, it's owned by Sisasimo now. They dry lumber to dimensional standards here and then they truck it off somewhere else. Um, but we just completed a study that looked at the possibility of reimagining this whole area and turning this into a mixed-use development that would be three or four stories high with a par- combination of apartments and, uh, commercial, you know, like retail and office space on the first floor. So right now, how do people feel? Is this downtown or is this not downtown?
It's.
It's downtown.
I had the biggest downtown, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we didn't.
Yeah.
You didn't have a downtown.
We stopped it at the youth theater.
Before.
Right, and then bef- but didn't you stop before the youth theater?
Yeah, just before.
Okay. Right. And if, so if, so this is like one of these edge areas. So this is the last question for the night. So right now, this is just outside the downtown, I believe, on the zoning map. Um,
Hmm.
and so if this cha- if the character of the street was changed because the use and the buildings were changed, would it become downtown or would it stay something else?
I think it would become, it would become downtown to me.
Okay.
You guys already have it as downtown.
Yeah, I mean.
And I mean, I would, I would amend my downtown definitions. I, this is what I struggled with in the beginning when you asked the question. There's, I guess maybe there's downtown and for lack of a better term, there's like urban.
Yep.
to me. So the urban area ends somewhere around here to me, which is where that character changes, which I think is what you, who you were thinking of as downtown.
Okay, that's awesome. Okay, that's excellent. Alright.
I think the, uh, for me, the cultural intrigue building pulls downtown.
Yeah.
A bit, that's further interesting.
So you think, yeah, so you think this is downtown?
Oh, definitely. Well, I, downtown for me follows the Whitestone up to the, to the bridge on Elliot Street, so.
Yeah. Right. Okay, yeah. Or Falwes.
Falwes.
Alright, okay, that's good. Alright, anything else, any other feedback you guys wanna give me?
I would, would, um, I don't know, I was just noticing the murals there. I'd love to see more murals.
You'd like to see more what?
More murals in some of the sketchy areas, particularly like, like in unplugged for Elliot Street. We have several retaining walls.
Yes, you do.
That at one point had a, um, crocodile eating an ice cream cone, but it wasn't an ice cream cone. It was another word. And I just, you know, I mean, if the town owns like a retaining wall and things in some of these areas, the same as was done in the Harmony Lot, it'd be lovely to see if we could like.
Okay.
And along High Street and.
And, you know, the artists, the buckets of paint and make something nicer than.
Right, so, yeah.
Yeah.
That that's a Scott Barofsky mural and he's painted a bunch of them through Flat Street, particularly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and he's done, he's done this on the base of the Restless Rooster too now, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Yeah.
I think there's some on the church building and some on N Y T and some, uh.
Yep. Yep, yeah, kind of popping up all over the place. Okay.
I was just thinking, you know, generally, even with thinking about this, it's a nice thing to think about if there's a way we could, um, build into like our downtown plan. Um.
Art.
Art, yeah, pu- public art, because that is something Brattleboro, you know, would would like to like claim.
Right.
And any way we can incorporate that into particularly if it's a town-owned property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like a town retaining wall or a parking lot or parking garage. I just think that'd be nice, like the parking garage, the north side of the parking garage where there's that, um, chain link fence.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that she said, I'm sorry, but, you know, that that she likes to like walk more quickly down. If you could mow down and somehow keep those weeds down.
Right.
That's a lovely spot for a mural.
Right.
Hmm.
Right. Yeah, if you knew more about the structural integrity of the parking garage, you'd probably continue to walk fast there, but that's good. That's alright. Well, have you noticed that it's salting?
Okay.
It's not supposed to.
I haven't gotten that close.
Hmm, it's sinking, so we.
Salting.
Salting.
It's eff- the effervescence stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Interesting question.
Not entirely sure why. But, yeah, um, that's good actually. That's excellent, thank you. So anything else? Anyone? Sean, any comments?
Um.
I'd be happy with a motion to adjourn.
Don't make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Second, second?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.